He'll be a senior in college.
Good evening. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Adams.
Good evening. Before we get started tonight, I just wanted to recognize a young lady from our community that, in my opinion, accomplished quite a feat here just recently. So I'd ask Piper Wade if she'd come up and her dad can come along with her, and her sister, if she likes. Piper competed in the pitch-hit-and-run contest and ended up going to the Nationals and was able to go to the World Series and compete there. And did quite well, not quite as well as she wanted to, but I know she's got some time left to go do that again. But we wanted to give her a little bit of recognition. And tonight we'll say, "Bieber Creek commends and appreciates Piper Wade." Piper recently competed in the national finals of the Major League Baseball Pitch Hit-and-Run Competition held during the World Series. After winning a local competition in Eaton, Ohio, Piper advanced to the sectional competition at the Great American Ballpark in Cincinnati, where she competed with several other girls in her age group. Piper was one of four finalists from across the United States and earned a spot in the finals held during the World Series, where she placed third in the country in her age group. Piper plans to continue her quest to be number one in the country next year. Now, therefore, I, Don Adams, council member of the City of Beaver Creek, along with the mayor and the city council congratulate you for this outstanding accomplishment. Congratulations.[98.11][98.11](APPLAUSE). Do you want to say anything?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Adams. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Duer.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Move to excuse Mayor Stone.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Mayor Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. This time, I'll ask all of you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a brief prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions and promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs in both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. Amen.
Thank you. You may all be seated. We do have an agenda before us this evening, but we do have to make an amendment to that. So, City Manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, several changes here. One, we had on under item, I believe it is, number 11, liquor permits. We are removing that, asking that that be removed from the agenda, as we had not received the paperwork, the police department did not receive the paperwork from the state as of this afternoon, so we cannot move forward with that. Also, we had a couple corrections just on the agenda itself. Ordinance 22-30, we had them switched. That belonged in number eight, and the motion actually belongs to number nine. And we had those reversed online. Everything else is correct, as well as motion number nine should read, major modification, MOD 9-22, it's a major modification is what that is. As well as in the motion itself, it's just a misquote of a site of the zoning code. It should read 158.070, and as you see, that is on your document. It changes, again, nothing. Everything else is right. Those were just some miscommunication between the clerk and the planning department. So if we can have a motion for those changes, everything else should be good.
Move to amend the agenda to remove item 11, liquor license for city barbecue, as the police department is waiting on paperwork from the state. And note that ordinance 22-30 belongs to Agenda Item Eight, and the motion goes to Item Nine description. Should read MOD 9-22, major. And additionally, the zoning code citation under Item Nine should read 158.070, opposed to what's listed in the agenda as was posted.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have approval of meeting minutes from November 14, 2022, for the regular session minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. Approval of the amended agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Now, we can move on to the approval of the minutes from November 14 of 2022 for the regular session minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the approval of November 14, 2022, regular session minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So now, for our public hearings, we do have to table some of these for PUD 99-11, Casey's Gas Station, based on the request of the applicant. So do I have a motion to table public hearing, PUD 99-11?
11. Second.
I have a motion and a second to table PUD 99-11 per the applicant's request. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And similarly, with PUD 99-11, with the amendment to table the item for the regular council meeting until December 12. That's the specific site plan, I'm sorry. Tabling the specific site plan.
Move to table item until December 12, regular council meeting per applicant's request.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So now, we'll move on to public hearing, PUD 06-4.
PUD 06-4 amendment. The application requests approval of an amendment to revise the buffers within PUD 06-4. The property is located at the southeast corner of Shakertown Road and County Line Road, further described as Book Three, Page One, Parcel Forty on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. All right. Do we have the applicant present this evening?
Hi, I'm Sam Baker. I'm the Architect of Record for the project, representing the owner. This is a Kitty Academy. I can tell you a little bit about it. It's approximately 10,000 square feet with a same playground, approximately 7,000 square feet in the back of the building. We're requesting the modification to the amendment, or to the zoning code? Is that right? To allow us to put the building a little closer to the property. There were some conflicts within the zoning ordinance and zoning code, so we're requesting those be changed to be more consistent with what is being built along the roadway.
Mr. Baker, I'm sorry. Can you please provide an address for us?
I'm sorry. 673 High Street, Suite 204, Worthington, Ohio.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. We'll let you know if we have any questions.
Thank you.
Do we have a staff presentation on this?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Garcia, City Council. So I have two applications here. I'm going to present them together with the staff report, and then we'll do the public hearing and the discussion, and then the two decisions separately. But I'll just do one staff report. So the applicant is requesting approval of an amendment to PUD 06-4, as well as a major modification to the specific site plan. Should both of these be approved, it would allow for the construction of an approximately 10,000-square-foot daycare facility located within the IDA Center subdivision. Property is located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Shakertown Road and County Line Roads. The site's approximately one and a half acres and is currently vacant of all structures. As you can see, it does have a couple of access drives that service the rest of the center that will be modified with this application. The current zoning for the PUD does specify what uses are permitted within 06-4, and those uses are those uses permitted and conditional in B2 with some exclusions, but a daycare facility is a permitted use. As far as the architecture of the building goes, the elevations that were included in your packet show the proposed structure. It will be facing Shakertown Road. It is a primarily EFS building with an entrance that is consisting entirely of a brown brick. Then, there's a bronze metal canopy over the main entrance that is supported by stone beams, and those stone piers do extend around the entirety of the building. Then additionally, there are smaller bronze canopies that are similar to the main entrance canopy that are over all of the windows and doors that go around the entirety of the building. Each of those doors leads into its own separate classroom. The materials that are being shown here do blend well with the existing Wiltshire Building, which is the main building, the main centerpiece of that development. Something that is not shown on the elevations is the, there's a fence that surrounds the entire building. We do see a lot of fences around daycares for security and safety. I did, yes, so I did find some pictures of some other Kitty Academies, just to give you an idea of the way the fence looks. It's a black decorative aluminum fence. It's 48 inches around the front, and then once you get to the back, where the play area is, the fence extends to 60 inches, which is five feet in height. So the parking lot is accessed. There's one direct access into the parking lot off of Shakertown Road. I guess it doesn't pick up on the TV. So you have the one access point on Shakertown Road. That is a full access in and out. Additionally, there's a secondary access, which, if you look at the aerial photo, on Shakertown, which is also a full access further to the east. And then we have, there's a right-in, right-out access off of County Line Road, and then additionally, the full main entrance access just south of that one as well. So there are, you know, four different access points into this specific site that patrons could make their way onto the property. There's also existing sidewalk along County Line Road, and there is some sidewalk already along the improved part of Shakertown. With this application, the property owner will be installing additional sidewalk connecting to the County Line section at the intersection, and then on to the extent of their, the frontage along Shakertown Road. So the applicant is proposing 45 parking spaces for the site, including two handicap-accessible spaces. The zoning code, if you look at the formula for daycare facilities, the zoning code does require 55 parking spaces. So according to the code, they are underparked by 10 spaces. However, in your packets, they did include a parking study and a traffic flow study to show how the breakdown, how the visitors or the drop-offs for students and the pickups actually do occur over the course of the morning and the afternoon. We analyze that study, and it does make sense as far as seeing that, you know, you don't have a significant influx of students all at one time, say at 8:00 AM. You have people bringing their kids in at 6:30, anywhere from 6:30 to 10:00 AM, and dropping, and then picking them up again anywhere from 3:30 to, you know, maybe 5:00 or 6:00 PM. We've had this issue before with the other two daycare facilities on North Fairfield, where they felt that they had more than enough parking compared to what our code requires, and we have not had any concerns since then, once those were constructed, about them being underparked. And so that is something that with our next zoning code update, we're going to take a look at the parking calculations and see if maybe our parking requirement might be a little bit high for daycare facilities. So we're going to look at some other cities and see if there is an adjustment that might need to be made so that we don't run into this issue every time we have a daycare facility coming through. The applicant did provide a landscape plan and lighting plan. The landscaping and lighting does fall within the requirements of the zoning code. We do require that a final photometric plan be reviewed and approved by the city before we release zoning permits. Additionally, the stormwater detention is already existing on the site. The two stormwater ponds that were installed in 2007, the one furthest to the east on Shakertown, and the one furthest to the south on County Line Road, both of those were constructed to accommodate full buildout of the site. So there will not be additional stormwater detention necessary, but any additional water quality requirements and any other erosion control type of requirements, federal, state, and local, will be enforced by the city engineer. As far as signage goes, the applicant did not provide a sign package, but you can see that they do show a sign on the western elevation. The original PUD does outline allowed wall signage, and it is permitted on three sides of the building with a maximum square footage of 100 square feet per elevation. They're not going to come anywhere near that 100 square feet, just because of the size of their building. And then, the PUD did not reference a ground sign, however, they have indicated that they would like to have a ground sign. So what we did was we limited it to 25 square feet per side, 50 total, which is the normal size requirement that we have for a regular office district. So it should be consistent with that, and I believe Wiltshire Sign is around that same size as well. Now, as far as the buffer and the setback goes, this is where the Amendment 1022 comes into play. The second application addresses that, let me get back here. The second application addresses that buffer requirement. The original rezoning of the property required that there be a 50-foot building and use buffer from the eastern property line, as shown in the approved concept plans. So normally, what, I guess it would be best to look at it here. So what the original zoning states is that there would be a 50-foot use buffer where that driveway is, yeah, right where the arrow is pointing. The term use buffer isn't something that we use. We haven't used since this was done. We didn't use it before. And this project was done before Randy and I were involved in the planning process, and for obvious reasons, we couldn't go back and try to figure out exactly what was meant by it. Also, what didn't make sense is that there was this 50-foot use and buffer, but then there's a driveway going through it. And so when speaking to legal counsel, they advised us that because it's a use buffer, the daycare wouldn't be allowed to use that section of the property for recreation. They wouldn't be able to have their playground there. And that really doesn't, that didn't really make sense to us, that you could have a driveway there but not have a playground there instead, especially because it is within the vicinity of that residential property to the east, which normally we would require just a 50-foot buffer. But you can use that for any type of, you know, as long as it remains green space. So what staff is proposing with this amendment is that that be changed to a 50-foot building setback and 50-foot buffer. That way, the daycare will meet the 50-foot building setback, but then they can still have their playground within the 50-foot buffer, and then obviously, that driveway will be removed, which then makes it more consistent with what you all have come to expect from any development that comes through. You know, whenever you have a commercial property abutting a residential one, we have that 50-foot buffer. It's just a 50-foot buffer. So that, we're bringing that consistency back and allowing the applicant to be able to use that portion for the playground area. So staff is recommending approval of both the amendment and the major modification. At this point, we'll have the public hearing just for the amendment, and I can answer any questions about the amendment after the public hearing, and then we'll go through the same process without the staff report for the major modification.
Sandra, can you just, so we're all clear, even in my mind, I know then the council's got to be wondering the same thing. The amendment part then includes what things?
So the amendment is just for the buffer.
The buffer. Okay.
So we are simply asking that the buffer be changed, and if you look at the ordinance, the ordinance addresses what we are asking for in the amendment. So there are two conditions. You know, that there shall be, one, that all the original conditions remain, and then, two, that the, there shall be a 50-foot building setback required for the north, south, and west property line, and a 50-foot building setback and 50-foot buffer from the eastern property line adjacent to any residentially-used property.
That's the first public hearing we need to have.
Thank you very much. So with that explanation, then I'll turn it over to the public. With that explanation, then I'll turn it over to public input. Is there anybody from the public here today that wants to talk specifically about the amendment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll turn it over to council time. Councilmember Kern, do you want to start?
What is happening to the hill? It's all going to be flattened, then? I didn't understand that. Is the hill gone? No?
There's going to be a series of retaining walls and steps that we are going to create on the site, on the high side, and work it down to the lower elevation, which is, I think, along Shakertown Road. So we're going to, in the corner of the playground is where the retaining walls are going to set, and we're going to try to level out the property for the pad of the building first, and then use a portion of the parking lot to grade that out down to where the street levels are.
Well, then, from Shakertown Road, looking east, that part will still be a hill?
There'll be a little bit of one, yes. There'll be a mound there. But the good thing about that is it'll provide a buffer between the residential property and the actual playground.
I understand. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions from council on the amendment?
I had one question. Have you spoken to the neighbors adjacent to there about the use buffer and get any reaction from them?
So the neighboring property is a rental property, but we did send, the property owner does actually live in Beaver Creek, and we have dealt with him on some other issues regarding other things. We did send him out four notices about this, and he didn't call to talk to us about any of it or have any questions about it. So our assumption at that point is that he doesn't have an issue with it.
Okay. And then we will, I know this, I'm kind of blurring the lines between use buffer and specific site plan, but we will be enforcing that they plant these arbivide as well as the, it'll be stepped down, so it'll be lower, plus there'll be a buffer.
Yes.
I have a question before you. Could you go back to the, a different photo where you showed the roads? I think the one right before this. Yeah, that one. So does that buffer include the driveway that's running south?
So that driveway that's running south?
Yep, that one.
That will be removed. So they're going to take that out, and that will just all be grass?
Got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's where the playground's going to be, basically, right?
And the fencing will let go to the edge of that?
The fence will not go all the way to the edge. There will still be probably a good 25, 30 feet at least before you get to the property line.
There will be something separating, though.
Yeah, there'll be the fence, and then you'll have a row of arbivida all along there, and then more grass, and then the big trees, and then the neighboring house.
And I think Councilman Kern said something about that berm or that mound out there. That's the one that's on County Line Road. Is that going to be removed?
So...
It's the one that kind of sticks up on, it's on County Line, not Shakertown.
Yeah, I think the entire property sits, the whole thing sits up a little higher. It's not necessarily a berm. But yeah, they're not going to grade down. They're going to accommodate those grading changes with retaining walls.
Okay. Interesting.
Okay. So do we have any other questions or comments on just the amendment portion of this, and then we'll move on to the specific site plan discussion here momentarily. Okay. So I will close both the public input and the council input, but we do need a motion to move this ordinance to a second reading before we move on to the specific site plan.
Yes.
So do I have a, go ahead.
I'm going to read the ordinance.
Sure.
And then, Ordinance Number 22-30, an ordinance amending commercial planned unit development, PUD 06-4, further described as Book Three, Page One, Parcel Forty on the property tax maps of Green County, Ohio, to revise the buffers within the PUD.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to move that ordinance to a second reading?
Motion to move Ordinance 22-30 to a second reading.
A motion in multiple seconds to move Ordinance 22-030 to a second reading. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. All right. And then we'll move to public hearing, PUD 06-4, and Debbie will read the modification.
PUD 06-4 modification. The applicant requests specific site plan, major mod approval to allow the construction of a daycare center on 1.491 acres. The property is located at the southeast corner of Shakertown Road and County Line Road, further described as Book Three, Page One, Parcel Forty on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
All right. Thank you. And because we had the applicant presentation and staff presentation already on this, we will skip those portions and move directly into the public input. So is there anyone from the public who wants to speak specifically on this as a specific site plan? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public input and move directly to council input. Is there anyone who wants to start as far as the major modification goes?
I have a comment and three questions, Vice Mayor, if I may.
Perfect.
The first comment, just to say thank you to the applicant for the investment in Beaver Creek, beautiful plans, and to thank Planning for excellent work. Are there any plans for some kind of special occasion, Christmas concert, summer camp, things of that nature?
At this time, I'm not aware of any. It doesn't mean that somebody won't decide in the future to have something like that. They do have some open houses that are planned, but they are interspersed between some other activities, especially when they're trying to sign up people. But that stretches out through an entire day.
Sure.
What we've found is Kitty Academy has over 300 units across the United States. I've personally designed about 100 of those. So we have a lot of good data and experience, and that's what the traffic study and parking study is in your package. It's based upon actual experience. A daycare is much different from a regular school, where you have kids that are being dropped off, and it's sort of a tuck-and-roll type of situation, where the parents are trying to get out of the parking lot as fast as they can and drop their children off. The operations of this facility and others across the country is that the parent has to bring the child into the school for them to be checked in to make sure that they're delivered to a staff member, and that's for security, safety, and liability of the actual school. You never want to have a child lost or being told, yes, we dropped them off, but you can't find them in the school. So they have a computerized system that checks those children in, you know, for billing purposes, but also for security purposes. They do a lot of drills during the month, where they have a fire drill once a month. They cooperate with the fire marshal. They cooperate with the local police. They have specific plans for different things that may happen in the school. So they're very cautious about a lot of that. And, you know, the traffic study is one, like I said, that's based upon a parent stopping And, you know, the, the traffic study is one, like I said, that's based upon a parent stopping at the school for maybe about five minutes. They're parking. Usually, there's approximately 20 people who are engaged or employed in the school, but they're not all there at the same time. They show up as the census of the school increases during the day. Typically, a school like this has about an 80% occupancy. So, if you have 100 or 200 children, you're only going to have 80 to 160 students there at any one time, plus a staff of about 20. So, it does vary. It does, it's sort of a, you know, a living, breathing organism. It's always changing. So, I don't know if that answers your question.
It's very helpful.
Okay.
Because I concur with, with changing the number of parking spaces down to 45. I think that makes sense, but I am concerned about a summer camp or some kind of wider event that may draw more. And it relates to a second question. There are two disabled parking spaces for the facility. I'm in the demographic with youngish kids, you know, I hang out with a lot of parents that are in the daycare market. A lot of grandparents drop off pickup kids may require disabled accommodations in terms of parking. Just a float to council as, as a question of, just whether two is enough on that, given the potential for grandkids, sorry, grandparents dropping off, but just as a point of consideration for all of you.
Well, I could, I can tell you, I, I provide instruction to governments and, and different facilities on the ADA. Most of the restrictions that you're talking about that are handicapped, accessible, is based upon the ADA, the rules and laws and regulations that are handed down by the federal government. Most building codes are based upon that. They, they encourage more, but in most cases, that's the minimum that you have to provide. So, we try to do that both for a regular ADA space and a van-accessible space. And the dimensions are a little different for each of those. But most of the spaces we try to design to are a 10-by-20 rectangle. Some restrictions say they have to be smaller, some say they have to be bigger, but a 10-by-20 in most cases gives you enough room to open your door, take out a, a baby carriage or a car seat. And most of the parents, because they don't or can't afford two car seats, one in each car, a lot of times they will bring that car seat into the facility and there are storage areas for them to store that car seat. So, if a father drops off the child in the, during the morning and the mother picks them up in the afternoon, that car seat goes along with that child and is being used. So, we, we do take a lot of that into consideration.
Appreciate it, thank you. Final question. Where are the drains located on the property? I think it follows up from Councilmember Curran's question because the retention ponds are quite some distance. Just curious as to the location of the drainage, drains and then the drainage kind of idea with it.
That's really dictated by engineering and we, we've got the drawings completed. I can't tell you exactly where they are, but it is a consideration. The fall from the site to the drainage pond has been calculated. In addition, the pipe size is restricted so that the flow for a storm event restricts that flow, so it doesn't flow 100% all at the same time into it. It is restricted. Some of it will be retained a little bit on-site, but most of it will be going to the drainage pond. And then from there, the same design is, is used where they do a restriction on the pipe and that allows it to flow in a controlled manner to the stream and then that way you don't have flooding in the local area.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I have a couple of follow-up questions. As also a parent who's gone through daycare, the, the drop-off times, I concur with your plan, although I would say that just from experience, it doesn't work sometimes, right?
There's, there's no perfect plan. You're absolutely right.
But, but, but with this location being at Shaker Town and County Line Road, I would want to make sure that there are real thorough instructions about queuing of the cars if they do back up because I wouldn't want them on Shaker Town or County Line Road. There's, you know, those internal access drives and so forth. So, I think that, I don't know if we need to make a, another, you know, amendment to it, but as far as operationally, it does concern me because I know that I've been a victim of waiting in line till the parking spot opens up, you know?
You're going at the wrong time.
Yeah.
There, there are always challenges, you know, with schools and daycares especially, traffic pattern and things like that. I know that when we talk to the owner, there are several employees that are not going to be parking on-site, that they are going to be doing some carpooling and using public transportation to get there. So, that's going to alleviate some of that where, and I don't know the other schools or the locations, you know, maybe that is not available to them there. We, we, you know, of course, can't guarantee that somebody isn't going to drive to the site, but I do know in talking to the owner that she's already interviewed several people. They were already talking about carpools, they're already talking about public transportation and how they get to the facility.
Sure. That's a present-day situation. Times change and people change, but I get that.
And, and traffic patterns change and, and buildings are built and I, I think you said that they're going to build a, an apartment complex, you know, that, that's going to alter traffic and the traffic pattern and everything. So, you know, it could be that people, you know, like myself when I had small children, that I'd find a way that was not the main drag. I'd try and find a, you know, a side street that I could sneak down and, and get there quicker or whatever. And, and I think with this facility where it's situated, there are four different entrances to the site. That's going to give people a lot of ability to avoid, you know, getting into a queuing line and getting to the facility a little bit easier.
I just think we'll need to keep our eye on it as, as it goes along and work with the owners.
I, I think it's going to be a trial and error basis, to be honest with you. And once they kind of figure it out, maybe it's, you know, out-only on Shaker Town and, you know, coming in off.
I don't remember the other roads.
Yeah. The County Line Road. And, and that, to me, would be the easiest traffic pattern, but it all depends on where people are going to after they drop their child off.
Just to add to that, just based on their model of, of you having to get out of your car to check in your child, everyone's going to have to park. So, hopefully, we're not seeing, there, there wouldn't be any reason to have a lineup. But if, if we do start to see some sort of issue, we'll, we'll definitely intervene and, and figure out a way to, to restrict access if, if something isn't working correctly. But based on, on their model and how, how they have told us that it works, we shouldn't have stacking.
Okay.
Because they, you have to, you can't just, you know, throw your kid out the door and go on your way. You have to, everyone has to park and check in their child.
And I appreciate you volunteering to look at the code for potential updates to daycare centers. One of my comments was about perhaps we needed a code update as opposed to changing it.
Absolutely, I agree.
The last comment I had was about the dumpster enclosure. Looks like it's moved to the corner of Shaker Town and County Line Road, which to me is certainly not ideal.
It's not ideal, but I, the, the issue that we had with the amendment was that a 50-foot buffer does not allow for any structures. So, they couldn't put the dumpster within that 50-foot buffer that we're now amending. So, they looked at other locations for the dumpster and when you're looking at trying to get a trash truck in and out of there, that location is really the only location that it would work. You know, we talked to them about the materials that they're going to use for the dumpster and the, the screening that they're going to put around the dumpster because it is right on the corner. It does sit up higher and we're going to make sure that it's, it's not, it's the least visible as possible because ideally, it's not where we want it either, but, you know, we, we're trying to maintain that, the buffer that we are trying to establish here with the amendment. So, then to go and put, put a dumpster within that buffer, contradictory.
I agree. It's just a welcome to Beaver Creek.
We'll make sure, yeah.
We can put that sign on.
I mean, it's just, it's, it's a, it's a great prominent corner and I just hate to see a dumpster there.
Just say former location of the Beltline Auto Drive.
Right. I agree, there's not a spot, I mean, I quite frankly like the first spot, but understand the, the buffer issue.
I can tell you that it has a, a material that's going to be on the outside that's going to match the building, first of all. The height of it is eight foot tall. The gates are made out of a solid material, so you're not be able to see through it or anything. And we actually have it, it's kind of hard to see, there is a, an entrance on sort of the backside of it. So, if somebody can't get the gates open, which we discourage, we only want that to be open when they take the dumpster out and, and dump it into the truck, there is sort of an S pathway into it that they can walk in and then put the, the trash into the dumpster. So, it's not going to stand open all the time. And, and that's one of the ways that we, we've tried to make sure we're being sensitive to, you know, placement on the site, first of all. And second of all, if it is on the site, how can we kind of screen it and, and keep it hidden?
There was screening on the original plan around the dumpster. Is that going to continue in its new location?
Yes, the, all of the screening around the dumpster, see if I can get back to that landscape plan, will continue.
Yeah, that's, that's the old location.
Right. But the same screening.
Screen up on the front.
In addition to what's already on there?
In addition to what's there, yes.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any further council input or questions? Yeah, Councilmember Curran.
The three trees on the north side, they're pulling those out and you'll have new greenery along that north side on Shaker Town. Is that correct, sir? Okay, thank you.
I, I do have one question. Kind of going back to the parking situation, has there been any talks with the adjoining property? So, for example, if there was a Christmas pageant or an open house, whether or not they would allow the daycare facility to utilize some of their parking? Or have they provided any comment?
So, they haven't provided a comment. When we, when they first brought this to us, we discussed kind of that cross-access. I believe that within the subdivision, there is cross-access throughout the entire site. So, that would be possible. We didn't want to encourage it, just simply because if you look at, it's, they're very separated from each other and just from a safety aspect. But if there were to be like an open house in the evening, you know, the office isn't going to be open, so, so they could share that parking if necessary, yeah.
And then my second question is, in looking at County Line Road there and how close, well, I guess both of them really, how close they are to the intersection, I know we've talked about this ad nauseam, but I'm going to ask the question again. We don't think that there's going to be any anticipation that traffic will back up into those intersections?
The thinking is, so traffic shouldn't back up because everyone that, so if you're coming in on County Line, you're, you're coming in from the right because you can't make a left in. So, you pull in there and you have to park.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to park. You can't just drop your kid off at the door. You have to park the car and check your child in. So, everyone has to park. So, if there's any type of backup, i- it might last, you know, two seconds while someone is pulling into a parking space.
So, there is no left-hand turn?
Not on County Line.
Into, on County Line, okay.
It's right in and right out on.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. I'll close council input. Do we have a motion?
I move for the purposes of taking administrative action, approval of major modification for Kitty Academy Child Care on the basis that city council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials and criteria for a major modification to a specific site plan as per Section 158 dot 070 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows. I further move that this motion with all conditions be fully recorded in the minutes of this city council meeting.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Imposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right, on to ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First, we have ordinance 22-28 for Bond Research Park.
Ordinance number 22-28, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $1,095,000 Special Obligation Bond Anticipation Notes by the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, providing for the pledge of revenues for the payment of such notes and declaring an emergency.
All right, thank you. This was sponsored by Councilmember Bales. Do we have any questions?
Very good.
All right. And this will move forward as an emergency. So, Councilmember Bales, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. A motion to approve ordinance 22-28 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. On to ordinance 22-31.
Ordinance 22-31 to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue for fiscal year beginning January 1, 2022, and ending December 31, 2022, and to amend ordinances 22-19, 22-13, 22-08, 22-03, 22-01, and 21-26.
All right, and this will be a single reading. Mr. Sarah, are you on deck for this one, too?
Just a quick note, the previous ordinance that you just passed related to the opportunity to purchase the land from my Valley Research Park, we didn't anticipate this, this year. And so, what we need to do is with the sale of the ban, we need to appropriate the expenditures and certify that revenue coming in to facilitate the closing of that property.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 22-56.
Second.
This is 22-31.
22-31.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second for ordinance 22-31. This will be a single reading. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Now, Resolution 22-56.
Resolution 22-56, resolution adopting pay schedules for non-union, part-time, seasonal, and intermittent positions.
All right. You're up again.
Yes, every year, council sets the pay schedules for non-union, part-time, seasonal, and intermittent positions throughout the city. This resolution is adopting the new pay scales for beginning 2023. What we did this year, a little bit unique in that we were having trouble hiring part-time, seasonal, and intermittent employees the entire time, the entire year, and what the minimum wage in Ohio has in... the entire year. And what the minimum wage in Ohio has increased by 8.6%. So the minimum wage for an hourly person went from 930 to 1010. Similarly, for tipped employees. So what we decided to do was, because that theoretically is the market value of hiring new employees, we decided to just increase all of the pay grades in these categories by that percentage. So that's what you have before you tonight.
Okay. And I just, city manager reminded me, we did discuss this in the public for the budget hearings as well. So this is something that we have already discussed. But is there any further discussion that we would like to discuss now?
Just to make an additional point, it aligns with Ohio's changes starting January 1, 2023.
Okay. In these positions.
I did have one question. It's on grade 602. It's got a minimum of 808. Is that, that's below?
Yeah, let's see here. Which one was it? I'm sorry.
It's seasonal and intermittent, grade 602.
So 602 is a, that's a tip position.
Oh, it is tip.
Yeah, we set the rate on that one. It's a little higher than the minimum wage for the tip because it's the higher elevated position. So.
I wasn't sure if that was.
Yeah, it does look a little strange coming off that track.
Compared to everything else, it didn't, just didn't line up. So.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion for resolution 22 dash 56.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for resolution 22 dash 56. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Resolution carries. Thank you. Moving right along to resolution 22 dash 57.
Resolution 22 dash 57, a resolution updating the city's comprehensive compensation plan, including pay schedules for non-union full-time positions.
All right. Thank you.
This is a, another agenda item that we talked about in the budget session related to the non-union full-time positions. If you recall, back in 2020, we had, we hired Clemens Nelson to come in and do a complete review of the copy, compensation plan and the pay structure. And they did that, and they used criterias to establish points and scales. And they used that, and then also did a comparison of the local regional municipalities that were of similar size and similar services. And they provided a recommendation for the pay ranges at that point. In, in addition, they also, we developed a comprehensive compensation plan that basically sets the tone for how we proceed with adjusting these in the future. So again, the plan in itself that was adopted in 2020 indicated that in order to keep the plan current, we should do that similar study every three to five years. We decided to do it this year, especially with the economic conditions that we had out there. And we actually did that internally instead of going out and contracting that out again because we had the database available. And it was relatively, NVCC actually did a project that had all the local cities contribute to payroll database. And we sort of used that and a couple of other cities that were outside of that scope. And we were able to do that pretty easily in-house. So we went ahead and did that, and we completed our study and realized that, again, it needed to be adjusted. And then in order for it to be adjusted for not only the current year, but out in the next couple of years. So when we do this in three years, it'll be a market-driven percentage. We went ahead and adjusted the pay scales and pay schedule for these non-union full-time employees. And again, what you have there is, keep in mind, even when they did that study, even though we passed in 2020, it was really 2019's information. So again, we're updating in three years, and the recommendation is to move the scale, the pay scales by 13% was the average. So we did that here. Again, I just want to, you know, let you know that that's not an increase for the employees. That just moves the scale up to the market conditions right now. So again, the pay increases, which were in your budget that we talked about, will be in effect for these employees. But this actual resolution moves those pay scales for now and in the future. So be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions or discussion by council? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve resolution 22 dash 56.
Second.
57. Good grief. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 22 dash 57. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. And we removed the liquor permit, so we'll go right down to decision items. So decision item A is the OML conference, and that wa, that included Councilmember W. Thank you.
Yeah. The OML conference actually took place back on October 12 through the 14th, and was attended by Mayor Stone, Councilmember Bales, and Councilmember Adams. We just did not have the decision item on the agenda at that time. This is to clear that up.
Okay, great. So this is basically just to approve their attendance at the conference?
Correct.
Okay. So we have any discussion on the conference itself, or any questions by council?
We'll need them individually.
Yeah, we'll need to move individually. So I guess if there's, yeah, if there's no discussion, we can start, and we can start with Councilmember Bales. We have a motion to approve the attendance and the cost for Councilmember Bales.
Motion to approve attendance and cost to the 2022 OML conference for Councilmember Bales.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain?
All right. Approved. Now we'll do the same thing for Councilmember Adams.
Motion to approve attendance to the 2022 ML conference for Councilmember Adams.
With cost. With cost and expenses?
And cost.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second for Councilmember Adams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
All right. Thank you. And then finally, for Mayor Stone.
Motion to approve attendance to 2022 ML conference for Mayor Stone and cost.
Have a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second for Mayor Stone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Second decision item is the Oprah 2023 Conference.
I'd be happy to address this one.
Thank you.
This is the annual Ohio Parks and Recreation Association Annual Conference. I have represented the city along with a couple of staff members for the past couple of years. It is coming up at the end of January, and I too would like to attend again. They have an early bird registration if we get it done now before the end of the year. The cost is, I printed it out here early. Of course, I don't have the total cost. Anyway, it is, shoot, it didn't print all the way. Like, less than $400 plus hotel. And we do have budgeted availability in our annual budget, so I'd appreciate your approval.
Debbie, do you have, yeah, strength provision?
I have the total cost. The total cost is 564.20.
Including hotel?
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Protest to approve attendance to the 2023 OPRA conference for Councilmember Bales and cost.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second for Councilmember Bales for the OPRA conference. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you all. All right. Then we also have the OMA Conference.
The OMA Conference, Ohio Mayor's Association, will take place December 15th and 16th. The mayor is, will be staying one night.
Okay. Any questions or discussions on that?
Motion to approve attendance at the 2022 OMA Conference for Mayor Stone and cost.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have a discussion point as far as?
Just curious to the cost.
Actually, I'm not sure if there is a.
I'm not sure if there's a cost for the actual attendance.
Registration. I don't think there is.
Okay. We, we've signed him up for one night at the hotel, and the cost of that is $129.
And Mayor also serves on the director's board of the OMA. So I think that's a director's meeting or something of that nature there.
Quite frankly, I think it's excellent that our mayor is, is active in the Ohio Mayor's Alliance. That puts Beaver Creek at the table with a lot of fantastic, larger communities in the state.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. I already have a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. Last decision item is the rezoning for PUD 22 dash 3 and ordinance 22 dash 25.
Vice Mayor, if I may, this is at a request of the property owner, which has already went through council, or Planning Commission, and went through council as approval. It's within the 30 days. He requested it verbally and in writing from the property owner. It's just not what he thought it was. He was hung up a little bit about the buffer, which doesn't change anything, whether we approve it or not approve it. It's still a 50-foot buffer for the property. But he's, has requested verbally to, and in writing to, for us to deny it or retract the rezoning change. So a way we have to do this is we will need a motion to reconsider the ordinance as listed, and then a motion to deny, very specifically written by legal for us. So, but that's the background. Any other questions, staff can tell us more if need be.
I guess I'm confused. Can you explain that a little differently, maybe?
Do you want me to try? Okay. Yes.
Please.
The lawyer will make it so much clearer.
Yeah. Most applicants are happy when they're, when we council approves their zoning. In this particular situation, I think the applicant wasn't fully aware of all the parameters of rezoning the property. Unfortunately, it would have been much better if this had occurred prior to the second reading. Council, though, approved, and I think it went back, I think it was unanimous, approved his request for rezoning. But unfortunately, now that that has occurred, he's realized it's not really what he wants. What we're trying to do here is to avoid the ordinance going into effect, which then at that point would mean we started Planning Commission with a motion, with a whole hearing to rezone it back to what it was. So we're doing a motion for reconsideration so that, you know, under those motions, anyone who voted on the prevailing side, which was all members of council, can make a motion, and it can be seconded by any member of council, to reconsider this item. And that's a voice vote. Should that. Call it under Roberts rules. Roberts rules. Should that be approved, then at that point, the matter is back before council, and council can make whatever appropriate motion that council wishes to, though specifically what the owner's requesting, that the motion be, and the vote would be yes, to deny or to not approve the rezoning of the property.
So nothing to the property will change?
Exactly. Stat quo. We're going back to.
We're denying the changes, so the, the property's going to remain exactly the same.
And we're within the 30 days of the ordinance that was approved. We're in a 30-day period. So that's why we can do this. If it was already final, we couldn't do that.
Do we anticipate seeing this again?
I, Randy?
In a different shape or form?
It's kind of, we're at a loss on why he wants to do this in terms of, if he ever wants to develop the property commercially, he has to go with the zoning that's there now, which has a 50-foot buffer already built into it. And we tried to explain that to him a few different ways, on the phone, through email, and he just wasn't listening, didn't want to hear it. So if he wants to do anything, he's either going to have to follow the straight zoning, but it'll still have a 50-foot buffer, or he'll come back with a new ordinance. And again, we're going to, and we told them, we told him this, even if you come back with a new zoning, you're still going to have that 50-foot buffer. It's not going to change as long as the zoning code is the way it is, and as long as the current staff is still the current staff. I mean, this is how we've done it for 18 years, 17 years, and we wouldn't want to, we wouldn't want to intermingle non-residential and residential uses. So we couldn't, I couldn't imagine a scenario where we'd get rid of that 50-foot buffer, even if we saw it again, unless directed so. But we wouldn't recommend that.
Thank you, Randy. Councilmember Duer?
Just, question on the wording. Motion to not approve ordinance 22 dash 25 to deny the rezoning request that is written correctly.
Well, I wanted to make it clear that we are not approving it effectively, or, you know, we, to not approve or slash, or to deny the rezoning request. We're trying to put this thing back so that we're taking another vote on this action. I mean, it is not, unfortunately, there is no clean process. This is very unusual, and probably one for the books that I can think of. But it is, we're trying to, you know, accommodate the owner's request without having to go through a whole process of another rezoning, which really gets us back to square one in any case.
Is there a need for an and, or a semicolon, or?
Forgive me.
Not approve ordinance also.
Yeah, and certainly, and to deny the rezoning request. That's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I questioned that one myself. That just didn't make a lot of sense. But then the legal stuff doesn't always make a lot of sense. That's why it's legal stuff.
Well, it, it did take a little forethought to figure out. How to. Go back and redo this.
And I think adding an and in there makes sense.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
We need a person to reconsider.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to reconsider ordinance 22 dash 25?
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to reconsider the ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we need a motion to not approve ordinance 22 dash 25 and to deny the rezoning request.
Motion to not approve ordinance 22 dash 25 and to deny the rezoning request.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, exactly as stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Great. Thank you so much. All right. That moves us on to council time. So we can start with Councilmember Bales.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Garcia. This morning, I had the pleasure of witnessing two new officers be sworn in. Look forward to having them introduced to council in the near future. So it was fantastic, and there was a large crowd here in the council chambers, and good representation from Cedarville. I got to see an old colleague of mine in law enforcement, Dr. Oliver, and so it was, it was a good, good event. And I wish them all very much luck as they start to patrol our community. We have just completed two thorough budget work sessions, and I wanted to thank the several citizens who came and spoke about them. I want to thank the staff for taking time to create the annual budget and comply with all of our fund balance requirements, et cetera. And also thank you for putting in all the effort to answer all of our questions throughout. I wanted to congratulate 19 Beaver Creek High School student athletes who participated in the National Letter of Intent Signing Day and will be going on to college to compete and represent Beaver Creek. And let's see, with Thanksgiving behind us, and we're now in the holiday season, which I enjoy, I would encourage our community to shop locally and visit our Beaver Creek stores. And tomorrow... And tomorrow is Giving Tuesday, and so there are a lot of wonderful nonprofits. I would like to just call out a couple that are near and dear to my heart, which is the Family Violence Prevention Center of Green County and also Owen's Place. So, if any of you are thinking of making a donation on Giving Tuesday, all of their information can be found on their websites. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Dur.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Had the privilege of attending the grand reopening or restructuring of the Walmart Store 2124. Really a wonderful occasion. Mayor Stone gave a nice short speech talking about Walmart's contributions to the community. And I particularly like to thank them for their investments and their grant, or sorry, the donations to Beaver Creek Police Department, the K-9 program, and to the Township's Fire Department, really a wonderful event. I do wonder what it was like for shoppers coming in at that time where we were all gathered, but really, an excellent event. I'd like to echo Councilmember Bales's, had the opportunity to attend the swearing-in of Officer Smart and Officer Hawley, and to thank my colleague and friend, Dr. Patrick Oliver, for the college-to-law enforcement program and that Officer Smart is the first person to move through that chain. And so, really a wonderful state-led pilot program that Beaver Creek has been at the forefront of participating. And finally, I would like to fully cheer on the U.S. Men's National Soccer Team in their final group stage game of the World Cup against Iran tomorrow. Really praying to get to the round of 16, so, but a tough game against Iran, so forgive the tangent, Vice Mayor, but I'm just a big soccer fan, so.
Very patriotic of you.
It's football.
All right, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate Piper Wade again on her accomplishment, being third in the country in her age group at pitch-hit-and-run. That's quite an accomplishment for her. I spent the evening with some, several Girl Scouts at Mosaic Church with Councilman Kern and Vice Mayor Garcia about a week ago. It was a really interesting evening. They asked a lot of really good questions and, and all in all, it was a really enjoyable evening. It's, it's one of the things that I really enjoy doing as a council member, is going out and speaking to different groups like that. And they did ask some questions that, that made us think. Chief Fierita and I handed out dictionaries to third graders and coloring books to second graders at Valley School. That's a Beaver Creek Rotary Project, and it's, it's just a great time going in there and talking to those kids and giving out those books. It was a lot of fun. I was able to attend the Beaver Creek Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting at Mills Park Hotel in Yellow Springs. It was a great evening until I had to leave unexpectedly, but. Also attended the ribbon cutting and the re-grand opening of the newly-designed Walmart. It's one of 32 Walmarts in the country that have been done that way, so it's kind of nice to have one of those here in Beaver Creek. And also, I was able to attend a ribbon cutting at the Howard Hanna Realty Company, another company coming into Beaver Creek and establishing themselves here, so it's always nice to have new companies coming in. We wish both of them great success. I too was able to attend the swearing-in this morning of the new officers. It's really nice to see some good people coming in here, and I think the two this morning really showed what the desire to be a police officer is, is all about and some of the things that they went through to get here, especially the one young man. Hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving and were able to spend some time with your family and look forward to the Christmas holidays. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I too would like to welcome and congratulate Officer Smart and Hawley. I was unable to attend this morning, unfortunately, but as my fellow council members have stated, this is really a tremendous program and it's really instrumental in getting those officers through. And so, the fact that we have one that has come through the Cedarville program, I'm hopeful that we can have many more. It's also nice to see young individuals still interested in the law enforcement profession, so wish them the best of luck and we are excited to have them. I also attended the Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting. It was a fabulous event, and so I just want to give congratulations and kudos to Wendy Rogers and Chris McClure. It was, it was widely attended, the award ceremony was great, the food was wonderful, it was a beautiful location. And I would also like to congratulate Councilmember Adams for receiving the E.G. Shaw Lifetime Achievement Award. It was very well-deserved. He has done a tremendous job for this community and is everywhere that I think I am and everywhere where all of us are, I believe. So, he has been a tremendous asset and it was very well-deserved, so congratulations. And last, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Stone on his induction to the Ohio Veterans Hall of Fame tomorrow morning, so excited to hopefully see that or see some pictures from that because I will be unable to attend, but congratulate him in advance. That's all, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Kern.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I also had the opportunity, along with, already been mentioned, to see the new officers that we have coming onboard, and it was really great to be there and to see the crowd and the enthusiasm that our department has for these new officers, and I'm sure they're going to do an excellent job for us. Also, I'd like to mention that the senior citizens have a December 1st concert. Starts about 9:30 in the morning. It's put on by the strummers, and they're going to put on a program of music, et cetera, for the Christmas holiday period, so something to really look forward to here. Also, there was a outstanding Thanksgiving Day dinner that the senior citizen facility put on. It was really super. They did an excellent job, had a lot of participation by different assisted-living facilities, and it was really well-attended, over 125 people there. So, I want to thank the staff and the Department of Parks and Recreation for the great job that they did. It was really a super, super facility. Also, of course, the manager has this down Wardinger Park, December 17th, they're going to be open about 10 o'clock in the morning, I think, till about 1:00, to show off all of the historical artifacts that are out there, our new barn, as well as, of course, the cabins that will be gaily decorated, and we're looking forward for a nice crowd coming out for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And I think pretty much everything's been mentioned, so I will keep it short and sweet. Congratulations to our new officers. We're excited to have them with us, and we will move directly on to the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just to short ourselves here, the new officers, we'll have them introduced to council and the public on December 12th briefly, before the meeting starts, so we'll have another opportunity to welcome them to Beaver Creek. Just wanted to mention about the new park, the online survey, this closes just in a couple of days, so closes on November 30th, but there's still links to our website, from our website, beavercreekohio.gov/newpark. So, please, we've had two public meetings now, and I know last time there was well over 2,000 surveys filled out, so please continue that. You have two more days until the survey is complete, is closed out. Just, I mentioned, there's Toys for Tots, help a local family this season. The city of Beaver Creek is offering several drop-off locations. We're talking with City Hall, Municipal Maintenance Facility, Senior Center, and Beaver Creek Police Department. Gifts are accepted through Monday, December 5th, so very limited on the time here. If any questions, you can contact Public Services at 427-5540, but this is a good time of year to remember those in need by donating new unwrapped gift at one of the following city buildings that we just mentioned. Santa, call him. This is new. This is kind of exciting, so help us spread the word. December 11th at 5:00 to 8:00. This is with the Miami Valley Communications Council, so who helps us with our Channel 5 and our, you know, on Spectrum and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. So, we're going to be connected with, allow them to hijack our Channel 5, so to speak, for a little bit of time. So, we'll be going where that people will be able, more information is coming, a phone number is going to be displayed on the screen, but so remember, Channel 5, Spectrum, Channel 99, tune in December 11th, 5:00 to 8:00. Phone number will be across the screen. They can call and talk to Santa while he is on TV. The real Santa Claus, okay? So, talk to the big guy. This is a new definition of the big guy. Hey, we, we, we've been, you know, we blew our budget on getting him, so, you know, but well worth it. So, something new we're trying, they asked, I said, sure, why not? That sounds awesome. Tune in December 11th at 5:00. The municipal budget, we just mentioned this. Thank you all for who attended. Thank you, City Council, for being great sports about going through it and asking great questions, and I mean, that's, that's what it's for. We appreciate that, but during this next meeting, December 12th, the city budget will be presented during the state of this, during the state of the city. So, the public is welcome to attend and, of course, watch online as well. So, that's December 12th at the council time at 6:00 PM. And Councilmember Kern mentioned this, Wardinger Park, although the event for the attending the December 17th is from 10:30 AM to 1:00, that's where we're going to have, each cabin's going to be housed by, you know, the Optimists, the Kiwanas, the, I think, Beaver Creek Library, Historical Society, all these nonprofits, they'll bring cookies, hot chocolate, there'll be a sleigh, take pictures. Santa's going to be there too, so after you get done talking to him on the phone, then you can actually come see him. So, just wanted, yeah, keep December, Saturday, December 17th open that morning. But also, I wanted to mention, though, I think it starts, Katie, do you remember the time it actually starts at Wardinger Park where the lights are on or this weekend? Yes, so the winter walks, we didn't put that on here, so this weekend, the lights will be start coming on, so you can actually, well, 5:00 it's dark, but you'll be able to go see the lights and walk the sidewalks and look at the, all the decorated cabins, so you can get a sneak peek, this, starting this weekend. Infrastructure projects, we just hit the paper over the weekend, and so we just wanted to, we put out a information on our website and social media, but again, you know, city is using our ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act, $5 million that we received over the last two, last year and half of it this year. Big portion of that is in stormwater, in Willow Crest, which is the Woodhaven subdivision, big project there, and Vineland Trail as well will be two major projects. Just want to make sure that everybody's on, aware of that for the public before, once we, they're in design phase right now. Once the design phase is completed, which will be later this year, we will begin to have public meetings so that we can make those residents that are around those areas aware of the project and they can ask all the questions they want about what's happening and provide feedback as well. So, just keep an eye out on our beavercreekohio.gov website as more information comes, but it'll be at least mid-next year before we're able to, probably next fall before we even get the bid documentation that we need for, to bid it out. And I believe that's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you very much. So, now we have our citizen comments. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to come forward and speak with council tonight on any issue? All right, seeing none, we can close the citizen comment portion. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, Your Honor.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.